All right, so then, oh, wait, actually, hold on one second. Getting the psych out. Almost. I feel like fall and winter just came incredibly fast. It just got so cold so fast.
Oh, it'll warm up.
Yeah.
Did you see the pictures of the snow out in Denver?
Hmm.
They got a pile.
I saw that and just a day or two before they were in the 90s.
Yeah, 93, day before yesterday and 30 something today.
Yeah.
Tomorrow it'll probably be 40 or 70. Who knows?
It'll be some number between 30 and 93 probably.
Yeah, there you go.
It's 2020. Is any of that really a surprise at this point?
No, I was telling Brian that there's a chance we get hit by an asteroid on November 2nd. I mean, not a huge one.
Did you hear about the one went by over the weekend too? Some little one.
Oh. I know, I think with the way 2020 goes, that's more likely to happen than not at this point. Everything else seems to be happening.
We keep saying, how much worse can it get? And each month keeps delivering.
And then the question gets answered.
Yeah.
So I think we're better off not asking.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm using Judy's standing desk. It's actually a walking desk, so at some point I might test out the track. So although I'm wearing Crocs, so that was probably a bad choice.
Just don't fall down.
I know, so if you see me like out of the picture. And I'm hiding in the basement and it's a mess.
We see you go over, we'll just dial 911 and say, go out to your house.
Chris is, one of Chris's commanding officers on the submarine fell off a treadmill once, but it was in a submarine room, so you couldn't move. And so he, the treadmill just kept rubbing his face because he got.
Kurt says he's ready to go.
He took pictures. Was it in the bus stop? All right, we are ready to go. At least I get notice that it's there. I can't get the track part to start. All right. All right, so we'll kick off our meeting. Where do we want to start tonight? Superintendent McDowell.
All right, so just to bring everyone up to speed. What I had sent in the weekly update was that we would take tonight and start working through budget adjustment conversations. And if you remember at the last board meeting, Brian had talked about the timeline that we had put together that we all took a look at. And we're in that phase right now between August 31st and September 31st, which is really more of the planning and developing options phases. And so we can't wait any longer and we need to start having the conversation. And so what I'm going to start with tonight is have Jen Subert walk through and just remind everybody where we currently are with our revised budget and get us up to speed of what are the financial current realities? And then where we, where we're looking to be in the fall of 21. And then, once we do that, I'm hoping that as a board, we can have a conversation and really try to put together a guiding change, the startup of a guiding change document, defining what's our current reality? What are the desired results that the board wants to see when this is all said and done? And what are the things, at least at this point, that we won't do or would be off limits? Because that'll give us some parameters that I can then start having discussions with the administrative team and know which direction to be heading as far as what to look into and what not to look into. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jen and have her go through a quick presentation on the financial side of things.
Okay, thank you. Can you see my screen? Just want to make sure. Yep, okay, so today we'll talk about the budget adjustment planning. All right, so our current budget for 2021, the adopted budget, was approved over spending by 1.681 million dollars. So that will leave our ending fund balance for the unassigned at approximately $11,910,000. So from there, the fund balance policy, it's policy number 714, basically states that if an imbalanced budget is approved, then that the administration will be directed to develop a plan to provide a balanced budget in the future. So that's what we're starting to work on now. Just kind of a reminder of where we're at with our ending fund balances for the unassigned. Our actual 1819 was $13.5 million. The projected for 1920, based on the revised budget, was again about 13.5 million, so it was a slight increase, about $48,000. And the projected 2021 budget for the adopted
Is that we don't know the state of state funding as they recover from this pandemic. And so we have to keep that in mind as we look at our own budget.
I think that's a really important point, Kelsey. That's a very, very foggy future. The last point that I had jotted down in preparation on that I think our district has done well at is recognizing the range of tracks that students can take upon graduation and that we support students entering technical fields in coordination with partnering organizations and military and two and four year college programs. So I think acknowledging that it's not all, it's not all college track focused.
Okay.
And that reaches all the way down to like, when I think about our middle school's ability to do some technology and fax programming.
Does that capture it?
Yes, thank you.
I think we need to recognize too, that as a board, we approved additional staffing.
Yeah.
In support of our, in support of our staff and our students for mental health and special services. So we knowingly took on part of this, you know, and we knew that there would be a impact here. And we also knew that there would have to be a balance somewhere else. So we are now at the balance portion of the program.
I think that's an important, that's an important piece of, and I don't know how much discussion people want to have around that. But you know, Hastings, to this point, at least coming in as more of a new person to it, has been really lucky to this point, right? Where while in the last round of budget cuts, there were changes made to the middle school. There was changes made to some programming. Hastings has been able to this point to really manage to find all of the really low hanging fruit, to recapture back some of that, those dollars that otherwise, you know, didn't get spent in order to maintain a lot of the programming, maintain a lot of the things that historically have been important to Hastings. And it's, we might be to that point where we have to have some difficult conversations that Hastings has reached the point that many other districts have reached well before us, which is making some of those reconciliations with things that over time become important, like mental health and like special services and increases in the diversity of our student population, which while everything is important, not everything can be supported equally from a financial piece as we move forward. And, and those are the things that we really, I'm hoping that as a board, we can find ways to be on the same page with in terms of having one voice about what we feel strong about and being able to really articulate the why behind some of the decisions that we'll make along the way.
Okay, so Brian.
And we should also make sure that we note, not just obviously support supports, but community support around multiple. I mean, a lot of different sports programs. We support tons of different sorts of sports programs within the community. Our schools offer quite a number of different varied sports. And we have managed to hold ourselves up even in terms of middle school sports while other districts have let them, long since let them go.
Okay. Anything else we want to put in the current reality column?
Just one thing, and this is around community support, but I'd like to note something there about our business support that we have in Hastings. Not only with, with things like the whole night graduation party, but the support that we have from different foundations and businesses within Hastings for things like our scholarship, our local scholarship program are, are huge. And
Eagle bluff is a good example of that.
Yep, absolutely. And I do have a concern with what that's going to look like as we navigate our way through the remainder of the pandemic. You know, how do these businesses, do all of them survive? You know, do we still have that same level of support? Because it's something that we are very lucky to have.
As you look at that column is based on what you've verbalized, have I captured that? Am I, did I miss something? Is there more that you want added to those statements? And obviously we can always come back later, but before we move on, I thought I'd ask that.
It looks good from my standpoint, but yes, I think as we begin navigating to the right, you know, to the columns to the right, that will probably be stopping back at this one.
All right.
So do we want to move on?
I'll move us on then. So desired results. So sometimes these are the exact same thing or a different thing than what's in the current reality, but it's really trying to get at that, that base question of as you look at today and into the future, right? Because we want them back to the, we're really trying to make sure we're looking at desirability, feasibility and sustainability. And so what is it that we desire as we move through this process to maintain and continue?
I have two that I'd like to add. One is going through the process. I'd like to see opportunities for public input. I think some of the ones that were used, the like survey monkeys and, and polls and small groups were successful. I'd like to see that as a, in the process piece. And then, and maybe this is not exactly what you're looking for, but I'm open to the conversation that this is something that might need one or two years to resolve. So if we were to, I don't know that we have to go into 100% balanced budget in 21, 22. But we have to be moving in the direction of a balanced budget. So if something takes a couple of years to implement, so I mean, I, I like numbers, so I'd like us to be at no more than a million dollars deficit spend 21, 22, targeting zero and 22, 23 are balanced. Because I think that.
Say that again?
Just for a general framework that it for 21, 22 budget, I could see us deficit spending like up to a million dollars with a target of 22, 23 being at balanced. So that the, that the adjust budget, budget adjustments could be a multi-year. Could be a multi-year conversation. I don't want to cut drastically and find that it's not sustainable.
Yeah. And I think that goes back to, you know, at the top, the three goals and really making sure that whatever plan we come up with, it has to be sustainable. And they can't just work for a couple of years. And then we noticed that, you know, we're overwhelmed with a need.
Yeah. Well, and the reality is, you know, we did do this in 2014, 2015. It feels painful enough that it was more recent than that, but this is a constant, this is a constant process, but and we'll have to do something like it again, or somebody will, whoever on the board. I just think it, we should say upfront that, you know, I acknowledge that our current fund balance is above our policy level. And I don't want to make a decision and implemented in one year, if it, if it's better served to be implemented in two. And so all I'm trying to do is operationalize that desirable, feasible, sustainable. Give an example of what that means to me.
A.
I guess I'm looking and saying that, you know, we're going to have to realize what's sustainable. And then, you know, work back what's feasible and then what's desirable. But part of this is looking what's sustainable is, you know, we're very lucky in this county that the first half taxes, you know, folks paid them. And we, the county as a whole did not see a big jump in unpaid taxes thereby. When the taxes get paid, that's where, you know, part of the school district's money comes from. And, you know, going into the second half of the year, you know, the big unknown, I think, is, you know, Lisa kind of hit around about it was, you know, where are we at with the businesses and, and, you know, can they maintain and sustain, you know, their livelihood and thereby, you know, contribute financially through their taxes to help support the school system. And that, to me, that's the biggest unknown in the whole process. You know, you talk to business folks in the community that are, you know, just struggling or they're, they're not going to make it. They're looking at, you know, a quarter and maybe if things don't change, things, you know, business will go away. And that's, that affects our sustainability in the big picture because it's all about money. It's all about the income that supports the school system. And if what we want to do as a board, what's good for the kiddos, we're going to have to look very hard to find, you know, tighten down to look at what is sustainable moving forward in a pandemic. Because as things go right now, we're probably not going to be at a point where in three to five years, it'll be back to normal. This is going to be a very difficult time for District 200, let alone education in general throughout the whole country. And, you know, we as the governing body, the elected folks for the school district have to be very considerate of what is sustainable, then feasible and then desirable.
So with regard to that, the middle column there and what the desired result is, is really about what, what are we, what are we hoping will happen because of what we do? Right? So what's the desired, what's the desired outcome?
I am hope, I am hoping that we do not have program eliminations. Program adjustments are one thing. Program eliminations. Is that's as drastic as it gets. I'm also hoping that our class sizes can remain low when compared to our surrounding districts and our conference. And, and when I'm talking about program eliminations, I'm talking not only curricular, but also extracurricular. So our, our fine arts programs, our sports programs, et cetera.
On top of that, I want to add that the equity piece to not just maintain it, but to actually grow it. You know, as it was stated earlier, that Hastings is becoming more diverse. We're seeing more diversity in the classrooms. So I think we need to maintain a focus on that, that program. Same with mental health. The mental health component, I think is actually going to be, there's going to be a higher demand for it over the next few years. So if we can try to stay ahead of it, that is, that would be a desired result.
Yeah. And I would absolutely agree with that, especially, I mean, we don't know how kids are going to respond post COVID and what that is going to do to mental health and things like that. And so recognizing that, that, that needs to be at the forefront. And we already added on, you know, for mental health supports. So we already knew that there was a need there. And making sure that we continue to support that need and look at what we need to be doing for our kiddos. So anyone else have anything they want to add? I'm not seeing anyone unmuted.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, let's move into unacceptable means. And so what this, what this area really is talking about is what, what won't we do? What won't we impact? These are the the things that help us, for example, we're not going to eliminate any programming that would put us in violation of federal law, state law, right? We're not going to do anything that would ultimately cause us to lose funding, which would, which would put us in a worse situation. It then could, so that I have your, in your mind in that frame, it also can talk about, and this is more of, of kind of what Scott was alluding to with program eliminations, you know, are there any quote unquote sacred cows? Right? Are there any, are there anything, is there anything that is so important to us that we will not choose to do that? And that's, and it's, I think it's important that the board have a conversation about those things because we're going to have to put stuff on the table. And so it would be important for us to, to know if out of, out of the gate, if there is, if there are things that people are feeling strongly about.
Stephanie?
Yeah, I was going to say, it's been said already, but the music and athletics, I think that is what I would classify them as the sacred cow.
Yeah, I think making sure that we protect the fine arts is very important in this community. And I think, I mean, it's important for kiddos to, to have those opportunities.
So is this the way you want me to word it?
Yeah.
I guess I would like some clarification around that. When we say we will protect the fine arts and athletics, what does that? I'm not going to assume what you mean. I'd like to hear, what, what do you, what do you mean? That we won't eliminate them, that we won't change anything about them? What does that mean?
To me, what that means is that we know the community, we know the students are, they, they, what is the word that I'm trying to look for? It is, it's important. And so if we're looking at cuts, I would say we need to look at keeping those and, and looking at alternatives or like getting creative if we have to make cuts in these areas. That's, does that help at all, Scott?
Yeah. So, so what you're, what, what I hear you saying, and I just want to, I'm just asking to understand is I'm hearing you saying that protect means we will not eliminate. Protect does not mean that there couldn't be changes. Right?
Strategic, absolutely.
Right, okay.
Does it, can I ask just to clarify further? So that what I'm hearing then is let's say that it's, it's fine arts, they're on the table are fine arts and underwater basket weaving, for example. Right? Underwater basket weaving is going to take, is, is what we're going to look at instead of fine arts. That'll be our last, fine arts and athletics are so important as a, as a system, that those are the two things that we're going to work our way through everything else before we really look at those two.
Yeah, exactly what I'm saying. If, if we're weighing show choir versus underwater basket weaving, you know, we would have to weigh those options. What is the benefit to eliminating one over the other? So yeah, placing emphasis on fine arts and athletics when considering budget cuts.
Okay.
Did Becky, did I see your hand go up? Okay. And then Brian.
I just wanted to agree with Stephanie. I think that it's really important to protect or not eliminate these, especially if we're focusing on a mental health for students. And during the COVID and this pandemic, I think it's really important that we protect or not eliminate or change in some way. If we have to, you know, one or the other, look at the numbers and, you know, see what we can do. But especially if we're focusing on the mental health and everything, I think it's really important to keep these intact if we possibly can.
Lisa? Oh, Brian first, sorry.
Yeah.
I think that, um, first of all, I agree 100% on, on those two for sure. I do want to make sure that it's clear that kind of to Scott's point, that while saying we are doing everything in our power to not obviously eliminate a sport or something within the fine arts, that there's nothing wrong with having a conversation with those directors about ways that they might be able to make some adjustment that might help. For example, just an example, because my daughter's in Riverside. If we went to Luke and said, hey, is there a way that, now, how much would you save if we only did one costume change versus two? You know, things like that, that would not impact the overall, but might save a few dollars here and there. Just things, ideas like that, that we might want to throw out while obviously not talking elimination, but saying, hey, is there a way we can work together to try to work on the budget a little bit?
Does that, can you see that, Brian? Is that what I put in parentheses? Does that help?
All right.
Yeah, that helps.
All right, Lisa.
Okay, I got booted off on my computer, so switch to my phone. There's no easy way to say this. Putting the piece in parentheses helps. Because we're way, I feel like we're way too early in this process to say we will not affect fine arts and we will not affect athletics. And I don't feel comfortable with those two being in the same sentence. I don't see them in the same way. I think I'm not convinced as much as I support those programs, I'm not convinced that anything needs to be on the sacred cow list because this is going to be a difficult process. I would agree with Scott. I don't want to see program elimination. I would like us to look at modifications, whether that's contact time, when it gets offered, when it's initially offered, and/or community partners that would better be able to provide that that asset. And can we partner with them and bring supporting organizations in? It can stay on for purposes of discussion, especially if it keeps those parentheses in there. And I'm comfortable with that, but I've done this before and I think it makes it really hard if, if you put things that you love, but that maybe don't align quite exactly with the academic outcome.
But I think I wouldn't disagree. And I think it might be worth us, you know, circling back to the desired results and clarifying what's our desired results. Cause I think the ultimate desired result is to have a balanced budget. That's the big piece, right? And, you know, my stomach's already turning having this conversation. Because it's, it's, I've been through it before as well. And, and there, there's nothing popular about making these decisions. But when I look at what's in our desired column in my head, I'm already thinking about, you know, in a school system, 80, 85% of our dollars are spent on people. And people do one of two things. They either keep our class sizes low and support our class sizes, or they deliver programming that we want. Which is one of the reasons why I started with, Hastings has already been through this a couple of years ago. And a lot of the really low, low hanging fruit was trimmed. And so there, I also don't want to be in a position where we're, we, I just don't want to dance around what's right in front of us, which is some really tough decisions. Because when it comes down to it, it is about class size, it is about programming, it's about, it's about people. And it's how do we do it differently? To make it the best that we can make it with what we have and live inside of our means.
Bob, I guess I'd go back then to the desired results and start out with, you know, a statement about we want a balanced budget to start with, or a budget that is, you know, sustainable. Let's go with that. I think that that's probably, you know, we need to be, okay.
Scott, did I see your hand go up?
I did. Just a question for the group and then something to add to the unacceptable list. So I'll start with the add to the unacceptable, since I see the cursor blinking there.
Sorry.
And no, that's fine. I would say anything that would diminish the health and/or safety of our staff and our students would be on the unacceptable list. And then I have, I have a question here. Would we be better served, since we're putting caveats on the fine arts and athletics, would we be better served to move them from the unacceptable list over to the desired results list? And rather than phrasing it as a negative phrase, it is a positive, where we say, you know, we, we value and we would, and we would like to protect our fine arts program. We value and we would like to protect our athletics program. That's a question for the group, just to.
Sure.
Yeah.
Just, just.
I think that's a smart idea, Scott. We should have thought about that sooner.
Yeah. And I'm okay with that. With, I was actually going to add to that and just talk about the, we can go back to what we already have, and that is that we offer kids multiple tracks, right? We give them opportunities beyond college prep and making sure that, and for me, I think this is part of that equity piece that we want to continue is recognizing that not all children are going to follow the same path and making sure that we maintain different options for kiddos. Not saying we can't touch them at all. I'm just saying we need to make sure that we continue to offer students multiple options for their end of career path.
Yeah, I absolutely agree. I'm very proud of the technical programs that we offered at Hastings High School. And I think it would be a real shame to detract from that because there's a big need there. And it's a, and it's a great fit for some of our students, just like honors programs are a great fit for some of our students.
So is there something you want me to capture?
Um, you know, that we value. offering students multiple like career pathways maybe is a way to, to put it. And just kind of continuing with the value statements from above. Maybe. But I do think the mental health comment and the health in general comment is really important, especially given our decisions this spring and why we added those mental health supports. And I know we've talked about strategic versus tactical, and we still need to kind of plan this long-term strategic plan with the mental health of our students, but until we get there, we need to maintain the tactical approach that we've taken, so. Anyone else have any comments they want to add? Not seeing anyone.
All right. So I would say this is a good start. I don't know that I would, I would say that it's a finalized document at this point. I think, you know, as I started the conversation, in a perfect world, what I'm hoping, what I'm hoping for is from the board to give us kind of a sandbox to start with. And to be honest, right now, I don't have a sandbox. I have us protecting everything. And I'll go back to the fact that you know, it's, it is no more, this, this type of thing is no more complex than when we look at our own home budgets. And the idea that when we get to places in our lives with kids where kid A does something, let's say it's a, a private sport or something that is going to cost us extra money to do. We sometimes have to give up something else in order to do that, because that's more important at that point in time. And it's sustainable for a certain amount of time. And that's going to be what we're going to be asking you as board members to do is to make some difficult choices because as we look at this list in this draft, I know that what we want to make sure that we share with our community is that, that we do value and we, and we put great importance on what we're able to provide students, and that is very, very important. But we don't make reductions in a budget by not making some difficult choices inside of that budget. So that'll be my, my homework for you is I'll, I will, I will email this out as a draft to everybody. And then I'll be looking for some, you know, potentially some feedback over the next week or some clarifying over the next week so that I can start with our administrative teams to really start coming up with some ideas of what, what and where do we want to begin attacking this from the from the school organization side of it. So like Lisa brought up, we can then have something to bring out to different community groups as we work through this. Because I need that team to, to be able to articulate areas and costings with areas and potential options for you to be considering as a school board.
Lisa, you're unmuted. Did you have something to add?
No, I was gonna applaud wildly when Superintendent McDowell says you don't, you know, what we have here is a list of the current operating practices. And, and that's, that's fine, because this is a really dang cold pool of water to get into.
Yep.
And, and I appreciate the hesitancy of doing it and coming out and saying just how hard it's going to be and then, and then turning that into actual desired results. So I appreciate that there's a next step coming in the short term, because we just cannot, we can't take too much longer to get into this icy cold pool of water.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. What having gone through this before, one of the hardest things to to rectify throughout the process is that when you're looking at 80 to 85% of your budget being spent on the people that we employ within the district, that making changes is going to almost inevitably impact people and impact our students. And sometimes it feels like you're given choices and you're choosing the lesser of two, you know, the lesser of two poor choices, you know? So it, it's a tough process, so.
I think Becky's got her hand up.
Kelsey's got her head down. So Scott and you guys have done this before, so there's a few of us that are new to the board. So I feel like I'm very naive when it comes to trying to come up with these kinds of decisions, right, tonight, because I've never done this. So I don't know what I should put on here. I understand that there is personnel, but I don't know what else.
Well, I think
What else we would be putting on here right now, because I'm not really sure, you know, yes, do we look at staffing? Do we look at? You know, so it's really hard for me to sit here and try and do this tonight because I don't, I've never done it before. So I'm like, you know, it'd be nice guidance or what did you guys have done before? So I'm like, oh, that really completely makes sense or?
I will say we used a very different process and it was driven at the administrative level previously. That brought the specifics back, but I, when I look at this, this is the hard choice, okay? I think. So right now we have bullets that say, we hope not to eliminate programs. We hope we maintain low class sizes and we hope that we maintain a focus on mental health. Okay, here's the ugly reality of this statement. We can't have all those bullets on there at the same time. All right, it's not adding things, it's not saying things, it's taking things off. It's saying we are willing to accept larger class sizes at, you know, fill in the blank, at the elementary level of five students per class, middle school of 10 and high school of 10. We will look for community partners to assist in providing mental health services to students, which means we're not doing it anymore. So it's, it's the fact that all of these bullets are on here and all of these things are important, that's, that we haven't done the hard work. The hard work is saying, okay, we don't, we're not going to have program elimination unless student population is below this level or demand is declining. And that's what happened to us last time. We eliminated a program that was declining in engagement. So you'd say we didn't intend not to have program elimination. We will have to increase class size. That's the trade-off. That's the thing you have to say. Or we will accept program elimination. And we will reduce mental health services no more than 20% of current level. And that's where we're eventually going to have to get to, I think.
And if I, if I read documents correctly and got an understanding of the gist of what you did in 1415, essentially, the process at that time was to go to each of the levels, if not buildings, and say, give us an idea of what you can cut out of your programming at the high school. Programming is not a, not a good word. What, what reductions can you make at the high school? And that, those reductions could be due to class size increases or certain classes going away for a while or things like that, or the middle school, that type of piece.
Changing, changing the schedule.
Changing the schedule.
Was, was born out of the, the previous, the previous go-around.
Yeah, yeah. And there's advantages and disadvantages to that, right? You know, something big like that allows you to save staffing and keep some programming. Maybe not all of it at all the same time. We're, we're in a good place. That's why I sent out that, that Metro Exu document so that you could see, we're in a really good spot right now when it comes to class size and and a lot of districts aren't in that place. They're already at the high end, and so there's not an ability to move. We can look at class sizes. We would, you know, I would recommend that we, we always shoot to be right in the middle of that pack somewhere. You know, not on the one extreme, not on the other extreme, and because those seem to be manageable. And so we can, we can easily put numbers together for stuff like that, to be able to say, all right, if we increase class sizes K4 this much, here's how much FTE we save. And then as a board, then you'd have to say, well, that's worth it to us, or no, it's not worth, it's not worth what we would go through or lose to save this little bit of money. So then we'd go back to the drawing board and try to find something else. But that's kind of Becky where we would be going starting with. And so there isn't a lot in facilities in 1415 or before that, you know, we've already, we've already attacked the facilities in terms of making reductions to the amount of, of physical plants that we have. We, we don't have any, really anywhere to go there. We already have one middle school, we already have one high school, we have three elementary schools. We can't get much smaller from that standpoint. At administratively and at the district office, I, I don't know where you'd get any smaller there. And so we are back to, we're back to buildings, we're back to creatively reconfiguring some things, probably. That might be the term of the night, creative. But that's what we'll have to look at. I just want to try to get to a spot where I don't go down one road and as a board, you didn't want me to go down that road with staff to begin with. That's, that's what I'm really trying to avoid. If there's anything, you know, and that's a great thing to point out that music and athletics, no surprise, right? That's, that's a huge piece of the experience in Hastings. And so if, if that, if that's going to take a priority, then, then what do we, what do we look at otherwise? How do we do things? Then that's everything like Scott or that, like Lisa and Brian brought up is that could include ways of partnering with community resources to do some things where the program doesn't disappear, but it just isn't part of what we do as a program in, under the Hastings Schools umbrella. I don't know what that would be yet, but that's, that's what we needed to, that's what, those are the types of things that I needed to hear is, is that type of stuff.
Dave, did you have something to add?
I think that, you know, what I see here is, is a start. I, I don't think we want to, you know, the two things that we have down for unacceptable, I mean, that ties it up pretty good right there. I mean, now we're down to the point of looking at, you know, okay, what's the cost of personnel? What's the cost of services? And what's the cost of maintaining buildings? And when those items come through and with the numbers reduction that Jen talked about earlier this evening, some of these things might be harder to do, but yet maybe some things might be easier to do. But I think, you know, we've gotten a start here. You know, cutting back at a budget, you know, be it your family budget or business or the school district is always hard. It's, it's, it's like, you know, everybody has wants and thoughts and wants to go what direction, but you know, it's, I think we've got a lot on our plate to deal with, but I think it's something that, you know, with some more digging and, and when we get down to the numbers, I'm sure that we could find the means to get ourselves at least close to a balance in this year and then have a balanced budget or a sense that we will have a balanced budget in the next year and moving forward.
Did anyone else want to add something?
No, well, just, just one piece of summary. I think as we start the back and forth, the process will become a lot more clear. You know, right now, it, it's very easy to put up, well, we, you know, like we've already talked about, we'd like to have these desired results. And of course, we don't want to cut anything. And that's kind of where, where we're all at right now. But I think as some of the options start coming back or some of the ideas start coming back, that will foster further conversation and further ideas from the board as well, because something may come back that, you know, that, that we look at and we go, no, 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 we don't want to go down that road. Okay, great, then we can pivot to something else. Or there may be something that, that bring, that comes to us that spurs further conversation that leads to another idea, so. And Lisa's very right. We've not, I, I like this. I think this is a really good idea. But this is very different from how we have done it previously. And I think it's different in a good way, so.
All right, well, I will, I'll make, I'll turn this into a PDF and I will send it out. I'll have Becky post it on the website as well, so that people can, can see it and and we can be fully transparent. It'll say draft on it. But we can be transparent with the community in terms of what the conversation is at this point in time. Because I'm sure it will change. We can stop sharing my screen, I think, here. Here we go. So I don't, the only other thing I would have is it just a question of if there's anything that any of the board members have for me or Jen in terms of moving forward in the, in the short term?
Is this the time for completely unrelated topics? Or does it still have to relate to budget?
That is up to the board chair.
Kelsey?
Well, let's see if there's any comments about budget first, and if not, then this is the time for unrelated comments.
Go for it, Lisa.
All right, you're up.
This is, maybe it's not a simple question. I'm just curious of the, this is super specific, the timeline when we anticipate the guidance from MDE or at least go ahead from MDE on the revising our food service plan. I think everybody, I at least was surprised to see that modification, so I'm sure there's a
We all were.
Wait back at everybody's heels that are actually having to make it happen, but I'm just curious about the timeline.
So we're working on an announcement right now and we're thinking the effective date will be Monday, the 14th.
Well, that seems soon enough.
Communicating it tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. That was a total curiosity question. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, other, sorry. Other question, yet another unrelated topic. The board retreat, is that a that's, we're still going for that, right? We're still on for the second, the third?
I have it on the calendar for that as the tentative hold, just because again, we had to reserve a place for it, so. I would say that's where we are now.
So we're kind of seeing how Dave's recovery goes. Really, so.
I hear he's got a boot. Ready to roll. Okay.
Are there any other unrelated questions, just as we're on an unrelated thing here, Dave?
Just about the, the board retreat, if it is the second and third, what would that timeframe be? I just want to make sure that I have childcare set up or at least start the conversation.
Sure. What we had talked about before was doing a Friday evening and then doing an all-day Saturday. So I think the, I think the idea was like Friday at five or six, if I remember correctly, Kelsey?
Yeah, I can pull it up if, to figure out the specific time that we talked about. But it was in the But it was in the evening. Just give me a minute and then.
While she's searching, Bob, I was going to ask you for a a quick overview of how day one and day two went.
Day one and day two, knock on wood, at least from our perspective, I only witnessed one crying student and they quickly stopped as we got them in the building, new kindergartner. But otherwise, it's been going really well. The amount of work that the principals put into planning, the details in each one of their buildings has paid off immensely. And so we've we've had a relatively smooth start. Transportation has worked beautifully. The biggest thing that in the last two days that I know principals are working on is just one, the details around getting kids in and out of the lunchroom and to wherever then they need to go. And the other is the, you know, kids are kids, and when they see one another, they want to be by one another. And so it's it's now retraining this whole social distancing while kids are in the hallways and and that type of stuff. But it it's gone really well. Our teachers have been fabulous. And really, really have, I think having kids back in the building has helped a lot to have people feel a little bit of normalcy, being able to connect with with kids and and see see all that comes with having kids back in your classroom is just a a important thing for our staff. And and that's where they they shine, right, is with kids because that's what they do. And so it's been great. And I have no complaints about how anything has gone so far.
Technology hold up.
Yep, technology is held up. We have not the give had to give out all of our hotspots yet. Our iPads came in yesterday. So our elementary students will be as soon as we can get those up and running, we'll get those out. The we're waiting on some Chromebooks yet. But yeah, I mean, we're again, I'm glad we started planning when we started planning and because it's paid off and and thanks to all of Jen and and Cam and Dreya, all of our ordering for all of our PPEs here and in and our our dividers came in for for the clear plastic dividers are in for staff. So yes, we're 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 going to take how it's going right now. That's for sure. And our numbers are dropping. So we thought we were on a really significant increase in numbers going into the end of last week, like I shared, but the last two days now they've dropped back down. So we will take that as well.
Yeah, I can confirm what Becky had said. So it would be Friday from five thirty to nine, and then on Saturday it would be from nine to four.
Thank you.
And then with the crying child, that was something I was curious about as kids have really been at home essentially with their parents, and they haven't been able to really get dropped off at the Y and things like that, that I wonder as far as attachment issues. If we're going to see more of that this year or what might become of it, but maybe they're so tired of their parents at this point. Mine are.
I only saw the one when I was out at the elementary schools. So, you know, but I can only be in one spot at once. So more than one somewhere.
All right, Brian.
I would, Bob, as you're going through on your travels, just continue to encourage all the administrators, teachers, whomever, to continue to impress that importance of following those simple guidelines of mask, social distancing. And the reason I'm saying that is because obviously having a child that's in universe in a university now, I can tell you that the difference between his experience right now in Fort Worth, Texas, and say Durham, North Carolina, or some of the other places is the fact that TCU kids are following the rules. And these other schools aren't, and that's what the difference is. It's the masking and the distancing. The universities that are doing it are having good outcomes. The ones that aren't are having the big old parties aren't. I mean, it's that simple. So we can keep impressing that. I think it's going to get us a long way to getting through this.
Yep, agreed.
Do you have our most current number for today, our COVID number?
Jen, what did I tell you?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Yesterday was thirty-nine.
But we are at one hundred and eleven last Thursday.
Yeah, and then one thirty-five after that.
So that's what was making us a little nervous at the end of last week.
Oh, yeah. After the holiday, see where we're at.
Yeah. So we'll keep watching it every day. And when it seems kind of like what happened last week, you know, as soon as we start seeing a trend that's exponentially different, then we start ramping up here in terms of what conversations and planning do we need to put into place? And what communications do we need to get ready? Because then our process will end up being to connect with the Department of Health, our contact there, and then probably sending out some pre messaging to families, no different than we would if we like in the winter time when we know that there's a giant snowstorm coming in four or five days. Our plan is to send some communication out to say, hey, if you haven't been paying attention, our numbers are really significant on the rise. And so we could be seeing a change coming. Please start to get ready for something like that if you need to plan for for something different. So that's at least where we're going to go. That's our thought process right now.
Okay. All right. Do we have anything else to cover tonight? I feel like the budget was a pretty heavy one. So.
It is a heavy one. So we will, I think, from an official kind of conversation standpoint, then we'll plan to have this back on as probably a report at the board meeting so that as a board, you can have another round of discussions around this. So that so that you can have all of you at the table at once.
Yeah, and I think keeping us updated at regular intervals and up to date just lets us keep thinking about it as well on our own for when the the time comes for us to really weigh in on decisions and things like that.
Okay.
I think we should touch base on committees. Let's see, facilities is meeting next week, right?
Let me get that screen up.
Um.
I think that policies.
I don't have that planner up here. I thought it was two weeks.
Is it two weeks?
Twenty-first, September twenty-first. Um, and policy committee, we've decided we're super go-getters. And so we're we're going to do two meetings a month. One to go over the ones that are just quick okays would be one meeting and then a second meeting to kind of go into policies that require substantial edits or are coming from scratch. So. Anything else?
Just just a quick note that I will not be at the board meeting this month. I'll be out of town. So.
All right.
Travel safely.
Thank you.
Fishing rod in hand.
That could be that that could be true. Yes.
Enjoy. We'll we'll look for pictures.
All right. Well, then I hope everyone has a great night and for all of you with kiddos, a great week for your kids. I'm looking at last names. So Stephanie, are your kiddos in the second cohort or the first?
They are, and they're making their lunches and putting their snacks together right now. So I am anxious for them to go to school tomorrow morning. All right. Excited too. Yeah.
All right. Well, I hope that all the kiddos have some good weeks, and I know that we're still kind of working through everything. And I imagine next week we'll get an even better view once we've gone through one cycle of the the hybrid, and we'll see where that goes. So. All right. Well, have a great night and have a great trip, Scott.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Be well.